Good evening. The November thirteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting of the Brisbane Planning Commission will now come to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Funka. Commissioner Gooding.
Here.
Commissioner Lau. The record reflect Commissioners Patel and Sayah Son are absent.
All right. Next in order, may I have a motion, please, to adopt the agenda?
Also moves in a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes with three ayes. Next is the consent calendar. We will start a time clock to ask if any members of the public would like to pull any item from the consent calendar. Staff, can you please post the Zoom call number on screen and start a timer? While we're waiting for that, are there any Commissioners who would like to remove any item from the consent calendar?
No.
Seeing none, we'll wait for the timer.
Thirty seconds has passed. There are no requests.
Thank you. Are there any oral communications? Is there anyone who wishes to address the Commission regarding any items that are not on tonight's agenda? And the staff can post the teleconference number, which is already on the screen, I see. And we'll set a timer for one minute to see if there are any members of the public who wish to do so. Participants can raise their hand by pressing the Raise Hand button or pressing star nine on their phone to indicate to staff that they would like to address the Commission for any items not on the agenda. And the call-in number is displayed on the screen.
One minute has passed, and I have no requests to address the Commission.
Thank you. Written communications is the next item on the agenda. I did not note any written communications online. Are there any that have come in since I last checked? Thank you very much. Then come to old and new business. I believe the only item, business on the calendar today, is workshop on two issues, one, the Brisbane Acres density transfer provisions, and then zoning penalty fees. Staff, may we please have your presentations?
Yes, thank you. The, oh, sorry. Give me a moment while I share screen here. There we go. The purpose of tonight's workshop is to discuss potential amendment to the zoning ordinance that would change the density transfer provisions for the Brisbane Acres. This study session is consistent with Housing Element Program 2G1, which called for a study session in twenty twenty-five. For this workshop, I'll briefly provide, you're with me here, I'll provide some background on the existing provisions in the housing program, and then I'll talk about the potential density transfer standards. There are three main questions to address tonight. The first is what districts might the Commission want to include as potential density transfer receiving sites? I'll get more into receiving sites in a moment, if any. And note that the city did not commit in the Housing Element to a specific amendment. It's only to study it, which we're doing with this workshop, but we do want to give this fair consideration and bring this back probably for another workshop in twenty twenty-six to get deeper into it. But this is a, I would call it a first pass, but depends on the consensus of the Planning Commission. So the second question is for any districts to include as potential receiving sites, what standards seem reasonable to you, or what additional information might be needed to further consider this? Finally, would the Commission have an interest in expanding the sending sites beyond the upper acres to also include the lower acres to allow for expansion of parklands that aren't necessarily in habitat areas? So those are the key questions that we'll talk about as we get a little further in here, and then we'll get into next steps. Briefly, by way of background, density transfer provisions allow for housing development potential to be transferred from one site to another site. In two thousand and three, City Council adopted provisions in the Brisbane Acres, that's the RBA residential district, that were aimed at preserving sites that have high, have significant environmental resources, and that would be in exchange for higher density housing on other sites that do not have those same resources, all within the Brisbane Acres. These were generally referred to as upper acres, those resource areas for the sending sites, and the lower acres for the receiving sites. The upper acres are those that had been identified in the two thousand and one Open Space Implementation Plan as most likely having significant environmental resources, and especially endangered butterfly habitat or adjacent to such habitat. Another term that generally covers the upper acres is priority preservation area. So density transfer provisions were adopted with the aim of the city acquiring lands in those sensitive areas or significant areas for open space. And that would be in exchange for allowing higher density of development on parcels in the Brisbane Acres without those resources. The standard density allowed in the Brisbane Acres is one unit to twenty thousand square feet of land area. So a sending site of six thousand, or excuse me, sixty thousand square feet could potentially send development potential to a receiving site of twenty thousand square feet, which would result, it's a combined total land area of eighty thousand square feet. So with density standard for the district of one unit per twenty thousand square feet, that would be four units for the eighty thousand square foot area. And through density transfer, all four units would be developed on the twenty thousand square foot site, in my example. And that would be ones that's split into separate parcels, since these are all single-family homes. For the sending site, the ownership would be transferred to the city for open space dedication. A few things to note, fifty thousand, or five thousand square feet is the smallest lot that could be allowed through density transfer. Density transfer is subject to use permit and design permit for receiving sites. Under the current provisions, both the sending and receiving sites must be within the Brisbane Acres, as I mentioned. And the Housing Element Program, the city committed to studying the possibility for receiving sites to be outside the Brisbane Acres, and that would be within either residential or mixed-use districts. Adopting such an ordinance to expand potential receiving sites could provide greater incentive for property owners of parcels and areas with significant resources to transfer their land to open space while, at the same time, providing additional housing units in other zone districts that may be closer to city infrastructure services and amenities. Staff included a table in your memo for this evening that outlined the various residential and mixed-use districts with some potential standards listed as starting points for your discussion tonight. That included the R2 and R3 multifamily districts, also the Parkside overlay districts and Southwest Bayshore. We'll jump to that slide in a moment. So the density standards would be a question to consider, again, along with any of the standards, any of the districts to include. So both the districts and the standards. Another question to consider is whether to expand the sending site, sending sites. So this is a reference map. It's a bit busy, and I'm not sure if I, where we go with the cursor. So the purple that goes all the way up into here is the RBA district, and it extends down and around this edge. It's essentially the lighter yellow, but it was overlaid for this workshop to show in green and purple also. So the green shows what the city has already acquired. The purple shows what's vacant, but within the Brisbane Acres still. And then what's left in the, whoops. Okay, there we go. What's left in the light yellow is, is developed Brisbane Acres sites. So there's a fair amount in purple still that could be potential receiving or sending sites. So generally, the sending sites would be what's inside this outline here, the kind of magenta outline. Receiving sites would be the lower acres, which would be out in this area here. Then the other districts that were mentioned for potential inclusion would be the SCR01, which is along Bayshore Boulevard here, not including the Mobile Home Park, that's separate, but along this area. R1 is not included, and CR02 is not included, and that was explained. R2 is here and here, in that little pie shape. And then R3 is along the corridor here of San Bruno Ave, and a little bit down in this area, close to the park. And then the PAOZ overlays are these hatched areas at the edge of Crocker Park. And then, for reference, you have this table in your handout. And essentially, it's showing the difference between the current housing unit density maxims and what, just a preliminary possibility for discussion of what you might increase the density to with a transfer from Brisbane Acres to increase the density by one unit for a standard five thousand square foot lot in the R2. Similarly, for the R2, R3 district, it would go, for a standard lot, that would go from three units to four, and same kind of density for the SCR01 and the PAOZ districts, although there's not a lot size minimum for the PAOZ. So with that, I'll open it up to the Commission for any discussion, comments, questions you might have, and I can toggle back and forth between the map and this if you'd like.
Before we open it up to discussion in our group here, can I use some clarification, maybe for the public's benefit as well? Can you just walk us through what the transaction or process looks like of who transfers what to whom, and what, if any, funds change hands?
So the transfer, so an owner would have a property in the upper acres, also would have a property in the lower acres currently, and would go through a use permit process that would go first through the Planning Commission, and in this use permit case, it would also go to City Council for approval. The property would then, the sending site would go to the city as a property transfer, but the city would not pay for that. It would be essentially, the bonus for the owner would be that they could develop more units on a site that is more accessible and readily developable because it's closer in to city services. And so that's the transaction. Also, there's a design permit requirement, so once it goes through the use permit, it would come back. Essentially, we've had one development that's been done. This is San Diego Court, where three housing units were developed this way. And then, design permits for the individual homes that were receiving sites went to the Planning Commission. Those didn't go into the council, but just the Planning Commission.
Thank you. That's helpful. As a, it's just my curiosity level. How many owners slash properties are we talking about here that are eligible for this? You know, how many people own property up in Brisbane Acres that also own property in these proposed receiving areas? It's just ballpark.
I don't have an actual count, but I think we have, it seemed like about eight or ten in the upper acres. I've lost my screen.
And just to clarify, these don't have to be pre-existing ownership. Someone could acquire property in the lower acres, say they owned a receipt or a donor parcel, they could buy properties in the lower acres and then transfer the density onto those.
Okay.
One other point to clarify is there are some what we term private, private street parcels. These are privately owned linear parcels that were intended to become streets in the event of development. And there are still privately owned roadway, street parcels that could also serve as sending sites.
Before we sort of discuss amongst ourselves, are there any other questions from other Commissioners about presentation?
Well, I had a question. So like the upper acres was somewhat defined as, you know, had significant environmental resources, correct?
I'm sorry, can you repeat?
Upper acres was, land was kind of defined as having significant environmental resources versus the lower acres land.
Correct.
And that was assessed and evaluated twenty-five years ago, or twenty-four. Have there been thought of, like, reassessing, you know, the environmental resources for all that property? You know, because a lot has changed in the last two-plus decades?
Good, good question. So part of the process for a use permit for a density transfer would be for the owner of the property to do an environmental assessment, a biological assessment, really on both the sending and receiving sites, to make sure that the receiving sites, what the status of those are biologically, but also the sending sites. I don't think there's been discussion, not that I know of, of the city undertaking a larger, more holistic look at it, be, I think, a fairly significant cost to the city. And that's really the idea, is that that be borne by the private property owners.
So it'd be on the private owners to provide some environmental report, and that would be at their discretion of whom they hire to perform that report?
I should clarify, the cost is on them, but the city actually hires the biologist. We have a list of approved biologists for the mountain, and so they would pay into a deposit account, and then from they being the owner, would pay into the deposit account, and the city would then hire a consultant, so that it's the city's consultant and not beholden to the property owner.
What would the purpose of this assessment be?
Well, if the definition of an upper acre sending is having significant resources that it wasn't qualified as a receiving property that could be developed upon, I'm just asking if those significant resources may have changed in the last twenty-five years since it was last evaluated.
Yeah, that makes it's.
Oh, we lost your mic. You're muted.
I am? Oh, okay. That makes it sound like this sort of transaction would be conditional on it still being true, that it's an environmentally, I thought that it was kind of, you know, hey, if you're in the upper acres, this is a valid transaction, and you don't have to reestablish that it's adjacent to good butterfly habitat or something. I thought it was already baked into this whole arrangement here.
There are a number of findings that are at the back of your report that go to what the Commission must find. And I should also say that the biological study is a requirement. They're within the Habitat Conservation Plan for San Bruno Mountain, and it's already a requirement for any kind of development to do a biological study, consistent with the HCP. So it goes to the county for review, it also goes to the state and federal Fish and Wildlife agencies. So the findings for a transfer unit is that it's one or more of the following considerations. First is contiguous with San Bruno Mountain State and County Park. Second, contains intact native vegetation, or it contains endangered butterfly habitat, or it contains permanent or semi-permanent wetlands, or forms a portion of a significant water course, or does not adjoin developed parcels on more than one side.
Okay. Makes sense, you know, but significant habitat, sure, that's, you know, very up for judgment, right? But I understand that there's still some conditions. These are the transactions you can do, subject to these findings and the approval of the Commission. So just for my clarification, basis for discussion, right now, the only transfer that's possible is from sort of upper to lower, is that right? It's all within the Brisbane Acres, and we're considering extending that to the rest. Okay. So that's one question. The other is, right now, it sounds to me like the, that both parcels, sending and the receiving, have to be owned by the same person. Is that right? Sort of, to make it worthwhile, but that could be arranged, like that person could say?
That could be arranged. So if somebody has a parcel already in the lower acres and they're looking to develop it, they might find a willing seller in the upper acres, purchase that, and then make the transaction.
Okay, that makes sense. And then one other question ahead is, all your math is based on these, you know, twenty thousand and sixty thousand foot parcels, but clearly not all, I imagine especially once we go into the residential districts, they're not going to be twenty thousand dollar, twenty thousand square foot parcels. So the math, there's sort of a conversion that's contemplated here?
Right. So it's, it can't exceed those density standards. So in other words, if somebody had, instead of a sixty thousand square foot lot for the transfer site, they had a fifty thousand square foot lot, that could only transfer then two units, because you're not going to get two, there's no such thing as a half a unit, right? So they'll get two units down, they're giving up another ten thousand square feet, but they get a bonus of two units in that case.
Okay. All right, then I have one last question, because I think I've, I know almost everything I need to know. Was the original assumption seemed to be that the lower acres had sort of less biological value implicitly than the upper acres? Was that the idea, because it's adjacent to the park?
That's, that's correct. That was the mapping, and it's not really, I, I've used those terms, and generally, that's what we're looking at, is upper and lower acres, but it really goes to the findings in the ordinance that I just listed, and then there's a set of findings that's related to the receiving sites. That's kind of the flip side of the same group of findings. So those are really the findings. So I say generally, it's upper to lower, but it doesn't always have to be.
Okay. Understood. Thank you.
I kind of brought up that question, you know, about the assessment, and, you know, when it was done at that time, and only because, like, you know, being, living in the lower acres and being aware of adjacent property that is, you know, going to be developed, but I'm surprised that at, on this property, when there's like heavy rainfall, like, you know, we had even like a couple of years ago, or maybe even like from this weekend, there is a, when you said that, you know, they were assessed for like significant water course, there is a river, you know, flowing in through that area. And if, when it was assessed, if it was during the summer or spring or, you know, non-rainy times, they probably be unaware of, you know, any significant water course. So that's why, you know, my question's on, you know, when, you know, when it's reevaluated or, you know, by whatever party, because it would be, I have video of this river, which is significant, and it's like, it surprises me that, you know, any housing, you know, development could be, you know, developed right there.
Right, right.
Just, can I, through the chair, I also just want to clarify that, at least from my knowledge, that a comprehensive biological resources assessment was not prepared to support the Open Space Plan.
Correct.
Right? So what the Open Space Plan does is, on a broad, you know, thirty thousand foot level look at, you know, characteristics that are documented of, you know, generally these sub-areas. But I just want to make sure that's really clear, that the city, to my knowledge, again, did not embark on a really specific biological resources assessment like the ones that are required for site-specific development. And I also want to note that the lower acres, you know, as a whole, just because they're designated as being able to receive more density, it doesn't necessarily mean that individual sites within the lower acres don't have habitat resources or value. You know, and again, that's why we do the site-specific biological resources assessment for any development. Yeah, so I just want to make those points clear.
So the purpose of this workshop is to, is for staff to propose some suggested modifications to the existing plan to increase density from, say, three units to four units per lot, and so forth? Is that correct?
Well, going back to the questions, it was, it's really about, if I could share screen, but, so it's, one of them is, is the question of, could you envision the density transfer receiving sites being in other districts besides just the Brisbane Acres? If so, then we can bore down a little bit deeper into what those transfer units might look like, because it's, it's a, it's a different kind of animal. In one case, you're sending units, potential development units, within the same district, within the same standards. In another case, you're, you'd be sending it to, say, a multi- In another case, you're, you'd be sending it to, say, a multifamily residential district to increase, you know, perhaps what they might do on a multifamily lot. The other part is whether the findings might be relaxed on the, on these, um, sending sites, essentially to allow for more acquisition by the city through density transfer for other purposes besides just significant environmental resources, but maybe for, for parklands, you know, that maybe perhaps a trail where people could go up and enjoy vistas, but it's not on a property that, that was, um, sensitive. And that's, that piece, that question is really an aside. It was not part of that Housing Element program. The Housing Element simply said that we'll study other districts to look at whether we want to use those as receiving sites. So, so you have, again, the R2 district, the R3 district, um, the Parkside PAOZ 1 and 2, um, and the Southwest Bay Shore. And they're, they're different. They're, they're different settings for each. So, so Parkside, of course, is developed already with warehouses. So these would be redevelopment sites, um, up to 35 units an acre in, in my example, but that's not necessarily what one would have to stick with. SCR01 is along Bay Shore Boulevard. It's also part of the HCP area, but it's not part of the density transfer program. It has larger sites, generally speaking, than the R2 or R3 zones. So.
So what, what would you folks want to hear from us tonight about our preferences or wishes or desires? One, whether we want to expand the density transfer program below the Brisbane Acres to R2, R3, SCR0 and Parkside.
Any of those or all of those?
And then beyond that, whether we will also support your proposal of increasing the density in those districts as well?
Right. And if you're not sure about the density that staff suggested at this time, that's something that could always come back to you if.
And whatever we express tonight by way of our inclinations or preferences or likes, still goes to the council for approval of the ultimate plan, correct?
If, if your desire is not to expand it outside the RBA district, um, we, we will essentially let the state know that we've studied it and, and leave it there. If, if council wants to bring this back up again, it, it could direct the planning commission to, to reconsider and reopen this. But no, if, if, if your desire is not for, to expand this outside the RBA, then I would say this, this would be the last workshop unless something else changes.
Thank you, thanks. But i- if we do, if we are inclined to want to expand it to these other, other districts, is that within our purview to make the final decision, or does it go to council?
It would go to council. I would envision next steps in that case would, um, there's, there'd be, there's a fair amount to unpack, I, I think. And so it would be which districts and then, um, if you have a sense that, that what staff put in the report makes sense, then we would bring it back and, and have it a little bit more flushed out with that guidance. If, if, um, if there's some other kind of guidance, then, then we, we take it how it comes. But yes, I, I'd envision we'd come back for another workshop in 2026 if, if you want to expand this out.
Any thoughts?
Yeah, I, I was wondering, um, I can think of several reasons myself why this might be an interesting thing to explore, but I'm wondering what your reasons were for bringing it forward? Like what was the motivation or the guidance you got that said, hey, we ought to consider expanding this program to the residential districts? Is it to increase housing, comply with the, you know, the demands from, you know, the Housing Element, things like that?
Right. It, it really was to increase the potential housing stock in, in Brisbane as part of the Housing Element. So it was to, to help address the state's, um, housing concerns and specific, specifically HCD. But I, I don't recall that they had a specific mandate for the Brisbane Acres, but we were, we were casting a broad net at the time to, to show the state that we were doing everything that we could to, to accommodate housing. And we didn't, with that in mind, we didn't commit to specifically changing the ordinance, but, but said we would study it and we would look at whether, whether this might be a viable way to increase housing stock.
And do you think, one final one, because I think you're waiting as well, do you think that this, that there would be more takers in a way, because the receiving sites would be in areas that already have infrastructure, surface roads, things like that? Is that the idea?
I, that's, that's the idea. And it's, it's, so it's both, it's both potentially more, more sending sites that we could get into open space and that's a good thing. If, for instance, on the PAOZ, if, if we can increase our density, perhaps we might see redevelopment to housing on, on some of those PA, PAOZ sites. Okay.
Yeah, my, my question was actually on similar lines, is if it was appropriate to ask staff what the pros and cons are, would be to, you know, expansion, at least that, that first part, which I think you partly answered, but, um, you know, other pros or other cons? Uh, yeah, cons.
Potential cons, I, I would see, um, maybe in the R2 and R3, it's, it's, you tend to have smaller lots, it's, it's largely built out already. And so I, I don't know how much it would move the needle on, on those, in those districts. The SCR01 is, uh, it, it has a lot of, a number of vacant sites, you know, there are some developed sites, but, um, uh, some, I guess pros and cons on, on that is it's, it's easy access to Bay Shore. A con on the same kind of flip side is of that is that you, you have more driveways coming in and off of Bay Shore. The Parkside sites are close in to infrastructure here. Would 28 units per acre density versus 35 units an acre density be all that significant in the, the big picture? Probably less so than, than some of the other sites, but I don't know if, yeah, there's one to chime in on that. Yeah, I think there are others, tools that are at the disposal of developers in the multi-density zones that are probably more cost-effective for them to pursue than this particular route. So I think what it's really doing is giving everybody flexibility for something that circumstances we don't necessarily foresee today, but having that in your toolbox in the future if things change in whatever manner. But I wouldn't expect this to be any, it's not going to move the needle in these other districts very significantly, to be frank with you. But the idea that the city is, there's value of having policies that, when we go back to HCD for Housing Element updates, that, you know, we've done steps to promote these sort of measures and creative ways to stimulate housing development and increase yield is not a bad thing to have in our, you know, to sort of demonstrate our willingness to do these things. So, so I mean, there is some value, even if we can't demonstrate, you know, number of units that would actually result from it. So that's something for you to consider versus, you know, but it is staff time and effort and your, your time and effort to go through this exercise. So, you know, the idea of putting you through something that is going to be a paper tiger isn't, I, I understand some of the trade-off of that as well.
So one, one way we could approach this, would sort of the, the compromise or the, the middle ground might be to, uh, support or, or express our, going along with, expanding to these lower neighborhoods, but without the, the changes in density that are currently in, in effect. Correct?
I don't think you were proposing to increase the density within the RBA, were you? That wasn't part of the proposal.
That's, that's correct. There was no change for the RBA.
But the, the R1, pardon, the R2, the R3 and the SCR0, you're increasing the density from one unit per 2,500 to one unit per 1,500 and so on.
Right. Not, not the R1, but the R2.
Right, right.
Yeah. Well, you're not going to increase the yield. I'm not sure what the value is for somebody then to pursue that. What is the value for someone to, you know, they're not going to be able to develop a 5,000 square foot lot in the, these lower zoning districts, which is the current standard, right? So you're going to have to change the standards and lot size doesn't make sense as, I think as Commissioner Wonka brought up earlier, the idea that we're, we're rescaling this. It was different to say, well, you had a 20,000 square foot and we're going to donate it and you can shrink your lot size to 5,000 square, square feet. That doesn't make sense in these lower zoning districts, because you're not going to be creating more 5,000 square foot lots. That's not going to, that's not going to help anybody who's a receiving site. There's, there's no value. If that's your limitation, I would not recommend you pursue this then. If that's your, if you're not willing to sort of consider a density increase, then, then it's probably not worth anybody's time.
Yeah. Yeah, it makes, it makes sense to me. I, my, my gut says that it's an interesting thing to pursue, and I think mainly for the reasons you said, conditions could change. You're just kind of creating more potential that if conditions do change, things might become more attractive. And in principle, I think I like the idea of increasing density in areas that are already dense. That's one thing. There could actually be, if I understand it correctly, a net conservation, right? Because you're sending not from one undeveloped lot to another undeveloped lot, you're sending from one undeveloped lot to an area that's already developed. So I think it could be attractive from that point of view. Yeah. And I, I guess the one con I was thinking that you could imagine is, well, you know, no one likes more density, sort of instinctively, we're kind of against that. And then I started to wonder like, well, what, I, I have no objective grounds to object to the densities you're proposing, because I don't know what that would look like. And I started to think, well, what's the density like in downtown San Francisco or The Hague? And I think it's a lot denser than anything we do on the, as far as I understand, right? There's really no limit to it. So I don't know what would make the proposed densities sort of unlivable or something. For all I know, they're completely reasonable for what is already an urban area in a way. So that's, that's kind of where, where I was going in my mind next. It's like, well, how do I know of these proposed changes, which I think are, are necessary for the reasons you state, to make it economically attractive? Like how, how, what sense do I have that they're, that that's going too far? And I don't, I, for all I know, they're not, you know?
So any of the changes that you're proposing here do not affect the parking requirements or, well, the parking requirements for any of the, the developments that would be, would be done there, correct?
There's no proposal here to change the parking.
Because that's one of those sort of red flags and, you know, hot buttons in this town is, is especially in, in the areas, you know, R2 and 3. It's a big issue for folks, but this doesn't affect that. This, this just creates more opportunities for a lot to be buildable.
Another consideration for the R2 and R3, um, our accessory dwelling unit possibilities is another way to, to have more units there. So there's already potential there. So if, if I were to look at, you know, of the, the four districts, the, the other two districts seem more ripe for this, but.
Alex, any other thoughts?
No, I mean, I think I'd be in support of, you know, the expansion. And, um, but I'm, some, I'm, I feel somewhat similar to, you know, about the density, the, the increase in density, just because I'm, maybe just don't understand it or, you know, not familiar with it. And so that's why I have some hesitancy with it, but, um, that's, that's pretty, you know, that's it.
So what is our, so what is our action item tonight for people to see for us?
So if, if you would like staff to, if you're interested in, in pursuing this a little further, but would like more information on density examples in Brisbane, staff might bring that back as just a, a quick check-in workshop and, and see where the commission might want to go from there. We have some examples from, from a couple of design permits that came up several years ago, or where we put together some, um, kind of baseline information, as I recall, that had some density. So I think the highest density we have in Brisbane, I want to say, is 100, 100 units an acre. And that's on a former hotel site, uh, which is, I, I think, I'm not sure, but I think it's a series of studio units that doesn't actually even have parking on, on site, but it was converted to a residential.
I, I for one think it might be helpful to get some examples like that that give us a real, you know, on-the-street feel for what it looks like. Particularly in things like, places like R2 and R3 where it's already, already feels kind of dense.
Right.
It'd be, might, it would be helpful like to know what like the current density maybe is, you know, now versus what it maybe was like 10 years ago, or, because I don't even know what 100 units per acre really means or, you know, feels like.
And it looks different depending on the size of the site.
Yeah. You know, in San Francisco, that might be nothing, you know?
Well, on a large site, it might be a very low-scale development on a 4,000 or 5,000 square foot lot. It's, you know, different.
And also the size of the units themselves, you know, are they, are they 400 square foot studios? Or are we talking about 1,000 square foot two-bedroom units? Big difference.
Yeah, honestly, density, while obviously it's a critical tool in planning, it's not always like, or ever frankly, it's not going to give you an idea of form. So form meaning like what is the actual height, you know, lot coverage, what does the building actually look like built? Because it does vary by the site, vary by all of those other factors, so. But yes, we're very happy to bring back examples of different built sites in Brisbane and what those density dwelling unit per acres are. And you can see the variety of. And you can see the variety of densities that we have, and they may not look the way you think they might look.
Helpful, it'd also be nice to to bring this back to a a more densely populated days. Speaking of density. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
All right, I guess we're on to the next issue of the. Title of it being. The zoning penalty fee.
Yes, thank you, good evening. So I'll keep this brief, as the commission is aware, the master fee schedule has a zoning enforcement penalty. Listed in the schedule, the amount of ten times the original fee. This fee has been applied in very limited circumstances, notably in the past year is probably the only time I can recall that we've imposed this fee. For violations of the zoning ordinance, specifically failure to obtain proper planning permits. The city's legal counsel has raised concerns with the authority to impose such a fee, as well as some concerns with vagueness and. How the present fee is worded in terms of the original fee and then the reasonableness of the multiplier ten times. And we go into that a little bit more in the report, but essentially, if the city wants to apply such a fee in the future, we're going to have to amend the municipal code to address. Legal counsel's concerns. So staff would like to pursue such a amendment, we think it's helpful to have the fee on the books and be able to charge it in prudent circumstances. We'd like to work with legal counsel to draft an amendment to give us that authority and to, you know, basically say that the fee would be imposed at the discretion of the community development director. So we're bringing it to the commission, just looking for some guidance, if the commission's generally in agreement with that course of action, we would work with legal counsel to draft those amendments. If that is the case, they may not ultimately live in Title seventeen, we're not sure yet. Even if they don't end up being placed in Title seventeen, we would still bring. Bring back the item to the commission as an informational item. So I'll stop my report there and just ask for any feedback from you.
I'll go last, but.
I I think you can go first, I think you're probably more informed and have been more exercised about this issue in the past.
I've made it clear the past, this is, you know, one of my. Minor zones of interest about this, because I I think that, you know, without teeth. People are inclined not to comply as as carefully as they otherwise would, so I I for one would. Applaud your moving forward with council with our general counsel to to get some some comfort level that our. Penalty fees are appropriately drafted and appropriately implemented. I'm not sure about leaving it at the sole discretion of the community development director, I don't know, I'll I'll punt the council on on that one, but. My two cents worth would be that that the more discretion there is, that the more challengeable. The fee process is, but that's beyond my pay grade. And I would certainly defer to to their expertise, but I'm all in favor of of moving forward to to get a better better fee schedule in place. Anybody else?
I would be all in favor of, you know, of as well, just curious, like. Is it surprising that legal, that council had reservations and can some amendments be drafted where it's more? I guess even clearer or more concise that wouldn't even require, you know, the discretion of a community, you know, development. Officer to, you know, to. Oversee a, you know.
Well, like every other set of regulations, there's always two ends of the spectrum, right? And the question is, does one size always fit all in these kind of sort of violations? In my experience, no, you have people who truly are ignorant of city procedures and law, it's not their day job. They take actions in what they think are in good faith and they they're not, and they're do something unlawful. You have other people who know business, know how to do business and routinely choose as a business decision not to follow regulations. And so to me, to treat all parties identical in every case, this doesn't, you know, philosophically, we all have our philosophical approach. That doesn't really make sense to me, but again, that is the council's call, they'll, if they want to pursue this and they want to make an absolute. You know, everybody will be treated the same, then that's their call, but, you know, to me, there is always some some gray involved in intent and. Frequency are issues that to me are important, but, you know, again, that's, if you want to draw. Whether they want to draw a bright line, a hard line in the sand, that's their prerogative.
Yeah, I I think. The commission is probably very happy to defer to council for their expertise and, you know, I'm sure they'll compare our proposal to other cities and other jurisdictions and how they do it. So that we're consistent with with, you know, most of the processes, but I I for one am, you know, I I applaud you folks. Goal of getting something more more concrete in place.
Yeah, and I I agree, I don't think, I think a little bit more clarity, setting expectations. And so kind of formalizing the teeth makes total sense, but I agree one hundred percent that you can't take away. There's always going to have to be some room for discretion, I think, it's like you you can't take it out. And I'm sure there's a whole art to writing these schedules that allows for some discretion too, right, you have to build it in.
Okay, thank you, we will work on that.
Does that conclude our agenda? I think it does. Think we can then adjourn to our next month, our next month, our next meeting is December eleven.
Well, before I do, I have one item from staff. As you noticed, all the meetings through the remainder of the year are canceled, which means this is my last meeting in front of you, I will be retiring at the end of the calendar year. So you'll be in Julia's capable hands starting in January and been a pleasure working with all of you and wish you. Wish you the best in your continued efforts and I really support your and applaud your community, you know, spirit and your efforts you put in on behalf of the community, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, John, I I had no idea, I I want to express our. I'm sure our joint appreciation for your professionalism and and your wisdom. And. Totally confident that that Julia can can step in, but you'll be missed. Thank you for your many, many years of service.
And congratulations, did you decide this just now during this meeting?
Well, you're going to take away the discretion of the community development director, I think, I'm done with it, yes.
That was the final straw, wasn't it? Congratulations and and best wishes and. It'll be really great. Thank you, all right, so no no twelve eleven meeting? Okay, in that case. Happy New Year. Thank you all.